Good evening.
Sorry for the record.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and call, we're gonna call to order the Board of Adjustment Special Meeting first. And we'll start with a roll call, but just to note though, Brian Serkmanik is not, he's an alternate member. But because we're missing a member, we could have Brian sit in as a, as a member, correct?
Quorum is four, so we have a quorum without Brian being a voting member. So Brian can participate in the conversation, but we don't need that fourth person to make a quarter for the vote.
So that's only if we need a person for a quorum.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, so Brian will not be a voting member, but he is allowed to take part in the discussion. So let's start with a roll call for, a roll call of the members of the Board of Adjustment, please.
Margaret Bowles.
Katie Souls.
Oh, good to see.
Andy Miller. Yeah, the consent agenda is, are the minutes from June 26th. The only thing on the consent agenda. Actually, I'm sorry, I need a, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so now under the consent agenda, which is just the minutes from June 26th. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Um, aye.
Any opposed? Well, thank you. Okay, open forum for, this is for the Board of Adjustment, not for the Planning Commission. Is there anyone that had an item for the Board of Adjustment this evening that's not on the agenda? Okay? Nobody online, really? Okay. So we, I need a motion to open a public hearing for the appeal of administrative variance denial for the ascent condominiums.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Alrighty, so we'll start with a staff report.
Okay, good evening, Board of Adjustment members. I'll be presenting tonight. Give me one second here to load up.
Alan, before you start, do you mind making sure your microphone is on?
Does it sound like it's on?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe I just need to hold it extra close. Okay, alright. I'm Alan. Again, good evening, Board of Adjustment. I'm Alan Seelof, Assistant Town Planner. Um, tonight I'll be presenting the administrative variance appeal for the ascent condominiums. So basic overview about the application, applicant and property owner are a ski and board broker LLC and Cornerstone Winter Park Holdings LLC. Um, two, two different entities for the two properties, uh, two, two current properties, but essentially common ownership in this case.
Sir Alan, if you could speak up just a little bit, that'd be great. I appreciate it.
My apologies. Yeah, just let me know how things are coming through.
No worries. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, kinda awkward with this thing floating here. I wonder if it's a setting on here. Okay. Uh, the location's at 601 South Zurich Street, um, Highway 40. Existing zoning is business district. The request is an appeal of a staff denial of an administrative, um, decision. And the request was to increase the maximum height, um, applicable to the property from forty-five feet to forty-nine and a half feet. Um, just to note that appeals of staff decisions to the Board of Adjustment are basically considered essentially as a request variance to the Board of Adjustment, so under the same criteria and process. Uh, here's a map of the general area. Um, the site is located immediately adjacent to the existing exports building to the east of, um, the Fraser Valley Shopping Center and south of Highway 40. Um, basics, submitter and review timelines. Um, project was initially discussed with town staff. Oh, am I popping?
Good.
Okay. Was it town staff in May of last year? Um, the application was for the variance, the administrative variance was part of a larger land use request, um, land use entitlement request for site plan review, major subdivision, and the variance that was applied for in late November 2024. And then we've since gone through two review and comment submittals with the applicant. As part of the second submittal, the applicant indicated their desire to appeal the staff decision, um, which was made as part of initial review of the, the request and the variance criteria, and then obviously today's public hearing. Um, the case was noticed as a public hearing like other, other regular public hearings, um, in the local newspaper, the Sky High and Middle Park Times. Uh, mailed notices were provided by the applicant to surrounding property owners and that, and proof of publication is provided in the meeting packet. There we go. Um, just a context, uh, shot of the, the site. So this is the current building, the ski broker building now known as exports. Um, this is a Google Street View photo from June 2023. Um, the existing building there, obviously on the right, and then the proposed ascent condominiums project is proposed to be on the left there. Here's the proposed site plan. Um, this is showing Highway 40 here on the upper right. The existing building, um, is gonna be there on the left with the new building footprint here on the, on the kind of bottom right. Um, we'll go into more detail on the site plan as part of the land use case with the planning commission later, but we'll have this available here for context. Next couple of slides are just renderings provided by the applicant, so showing the distant building here in the foreground here on the right. This is the view look of, um, looking to the southwest generally from Highway 40. The proposed ascent condominium building is there on the left. You'll see the, the, um, different heights of different segments of the buildings. So the four-story component is really the subject of the height variance request. That's kind of tucked in the middle there. And then the larger footprint of the building there, um, on the south side there is three stories. And then here's a, a view looking from the other direction. So from the, uh, southwest looking towards Highway 40 from behind the building. Uh, the zoning map of the surrounding area, all zoned, the business, the slot, um, adjacent lots. There are some other zone districts kind of in the greater area, but, um, all consistent business zoning for the immediate vicinity. And then I'll just also go back here, note that the outlined area here is kind of specific to the proposed lot that'll be covered with the subdivision case, but, um, this will be the new lot three, which the building will be on. So the variance request is limited to the, this property, the future property. Um, so just pertaining to the height variance, uh, maximum height in the business district is forty-five feet. The adjacent properties, including the Fraser Valley Shopping Center, um, the Meyer Lot Two, which is currently undeveloped. And then further away, the BMO Bank are all zoned, uh, business. Um, areas across Highway 40 are open space. These are the Lions Ponds. Um, and then there's other zoning districts kind of in the general vicinity, including planned development districts for Grand Park, um, further south. They include more of a range of maximum heights, but generally thirty-five to forty-five feet with, um, a few higher, I, um, allowed heights further south in Grand Park. The next few slides are kind of detailing the specifics of the height measurement and the specific request here. So the definition of height as applies to our general zone districts are, um, measured from a, a certain referenced, uh, datum, uh, an elevation point, and I'll, I'll describe that here coming up, but the vertical distance from that reference point up to the midpoint of a sloped roof. So in this case, it's a, it's a pretty slightly sloped roof, but it is sloped. The red line there indicates the midpoint. That would be the maximum height. So some elements of the roof are allowed to go above that maximum height, um, as long as the measurement within the midpoint meets the, the allowed maximum. Um, the, the way that the town coteries for the maximum height development or a maximum height measurement is that it's measured from the lowest of three possible measurements, but essentially the pre-construction elevation, the finished elevation or the lowest point of an exposed foundation. In most cases, it's going to be the pre-construction elevation as the lowest point, so that sets the, the baseline. And it's shown here in the provided elevations at the bottom right. It's approximately a one point seven feet below the finished floor elevation, proposed finished floor elevation of the building. So that full measurement is what's being requested for forty-nine and a half feet. Um, that necesses, ne- necessitates the, um, the variance rather than forty-five feet. Um, this graphic is assumed in of a, a different vantage point on the elevations, but essentially it's highlighting the elevator shaft enclosure. I've, um, shaded that in red. That is allowed, specifically allowed in the code as, um, an allowed height uh, extension or allowed to exceed the maximum height if it meets, uh, several criteria uh, listed out here, but essentially it can't be more than ten feet above the maximum height specifically for things like chimneys, ventilation equipment, elevation housings. So no issue with this, this, this portion of the, or of the proposal isn't part of the request. Right here, smoke detector. Excuse the smoke detector sounds. Um, and then just a, a final point on building height is as part of the review, um, submittal comments, comment response process. Comments were provided or concerns raised about, you know, application of the maximum height in this case compared to the recent rendezvous hotel, which, um, which was afforded kind of slightly different height measurements. And the reason for that is, you know, these are two different cases and they're subject to different rules. It's, it's a little, understanding it's a little complicated in, in terms of applying different height measurements, but for the rendezvous hotel that's located in a PD district, um, ED district specifically, there's language in the code that allow um, additional flexibility for the maximum height. So section nineteen four, one ninety lifts out or describes the maximum height is determined at um, final stage of the FPDP, and then it lists out ten different and considerations, criteria for allowing determining that maximum height. Those criteria are wholly different than proving a hardship for a variance. Um, you know, those are more related to mitigation of potential impacts of the height rather than proving something specific to the property or the lot at hand. So so not, not apples to apples in this case, a little bit apples to oranges in terms of the, of application of the maximum height for the ascent condominiums project here. And then additionally, just one other point to consideration is that, um, properties within the rendezvous PD and then also within the Grand Park PD are subject to a definition of height that is also slightly different from the town code, um, per those annexation agreements. That definition of height establishes the base elevation as an average grade rather than the lowest grade. So that in a, in a flat site like this, isn't going to have a big impact, but if there's sites with greater elevation differences, the, the average elevation is going to be a little bit more beneficial to the applicant. In that case, it'll raise up that, that bottom baseline. So with that, kind of just the last couple of slides here from my presentation are going through the variance approval criteria. Um, we're only gonna, I'm only gonna summarize the staff review of this, um, in terms of our initial findings, since that's what is being appealed to the board. The applicant will of course have the opportunity to, um, describe their responses and, and kind of any concerns with the staff review of that specifically. But starting with the first criteria, so criteria is that there are unique physical circumstances or other conditions peculiar to the affected property such as exceptional topography, irregularity, um, narrowness or shallowness of a lot. Uh, a- as applied to this request, the, the variance request wasn't reasoning wasn't specific to the lot shape or the lot lines necessarily or, or the lot grading. It was kind of a, a separate item, it, it queued into that, uh, particular or peculiar condition statement in the criteria. But essentially applicants arguing of, um, high groundwater being reasoning, um, for the variance request, which prevents garden level or basement, um, development, basement units in order to achieve kind of additional, um, residential units. So staff didn't find that this criteria ultimately met the, the intent of that or that this reasoning didn't meet the intent of the criteria. Um, it wasn't argued that the lot shape or topography was the reason for this. And ultimately staff, we don't consider the inability to do subservice development for additional units in order to achieve a higher density as justification for taller vertical development. Um, you know, this is kind of a, a larger question on, uh, allowed density, but from our perspective, density is a cap in the zoning code. It's not a end-all be-all that justifies waiving kind of additional development requirements that are also required for any specific case. Um, the second criteria, unique physical circumstances or other conditions do not exist throughout the neighborhood or district which the property is located. Uh, staff, we didn't find that this criteria was met either. Sorry. Sorry, I'm scrolling down my notes here. Um, ultimately, the applicant didn't argue that the, the specific, uh, variance reasoning, the high groundwater was specific to this lot. Um, I think it's generally presumed that groundwater elevations in the area extend beyond specific property lines. Um, while specific impacts to this lot versus crater areas may be argued, we weren't provided with specific evidence for that. And felt it reasonable to conclude that, you know, this condition generally exists throughout larger areas of the Fraser River Valley. So it wasn't a specific, unique physical circumstance to this lot, to this property. Um, criteria three, unique physical circumstances or other conditions or any other hardship complained on, complained of has not been created by the applicant. We agreed here, obviously the applicant had no, um, no impact on the groundwater conditions. Criteria four, because the, because of the unique physical circumstances or other conditions, the property cannot be reasonably developed in conformity with the provisions of this chapter. We found that this criteria was not met, um, as, as conceivably, there's other design solutions in order to achieve the stated intent of additional dwelling units achieving additional density. Um, while the proposed configuration might be a more desirable outcome in terms of design or limiting building coverage. Ultimately, that's somewhat subjective in our opinion, and we'll note that additional open space beyond the minimum thirty-five percent wasn't provided. Uh, variance criteria five, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or the district in which the property is located or substantially or permanently impair the appropriate use of adjacent conforming property. We found that this criteria was met, that building designs generally, um, generally compatible with surrounding context and minimal impacts based on kind of the, the relatively minimum, minimal four and a half foot variance request. Um, it's not impacted, not expected to impact adjacent properties and distances further away. It's going to be even less of a, um, observed difference. And then finally, variance criteria six. The variance, if granted, is the minimum variance that will afford a relief and is not detrimental to the public good or to the purpose, intent and spirit of the chapter or the town comp comprehensive plan. Uh, we found that it did meet this criteria. The height appears to be the minimal request in order to achieve that fourth floor, two additional units, but, um, relatively minor as referenced in number five in terms of accommodating the, uh, fourth floor design. And then I'll just note it's not listed here, but there's a seventh criteria that relates to for the purposes of, um, accommodating and ADA or accessibility need. Um, that criteria is not applicable, so, um, it doesn't need to meet that one way or the other. This is just the final slide here. Obviously, the recommendation, you know, staff made the initial findings and determine determination that it did not meet the variance criteria, but if the Board of Adjustment, um, finds that the, the variance should be granted. Um, we would recommend that one condition is, is applied that, um, related to the duration of a per, of, of approval for one year and essentially ties those variants to any future subsequent land use approval for the larger descent case for the major site plan and subdivision. And that one-year date would, uh, begin at Board of Trustees approval, should that occur. So with that, thank you. Sorry for the distractions and hopefully the, uh, microphone issues are okay. Um, I'm happy to address any questions now and then the applicant will be, um, be able to speak on this and I, we can answer questions kind of following that.
So to be clear, if this piece of property had been in a PD, it would have been evaluated under a different, the height?
Correct. And I don't know if that would have changed our determination. We didn't go through that exercise. Um, it would have altered the baseline elevation potentially slightly, and then we would have had to go through those ten separate lists of the PD height section in order to evaluate whether to grant.
But that criteria is not as nearly as restrictive as the.
Correct. Not in our opinion, no, because it's not proving a hardship, something specific to the lot. Um, and that process would have just been as part of the land use approval case, the site plan case with planning commission and Board of Trustees. It wouldn't have been eligible for an administrative review at that point. We probably would have provided like initial findings on it, but would have had time to, um, consider it and offer suggestions.
So this is the only way, this variance is really the only way that they can get the additional five feet that they need is because it's a.
Correct.
Equidient zone.
Yeah, and we don't, there isn't another zone district that allows a higher height. There's a specific overlay, I believe, for St. Louis Landing, right? The overlay potentially affords additional height with additional affordable housing units, but, um, that would have been a, a separate request and the overlay doesn't currently apply to this property.
Okay, so we, we would actually need to amend the code or change the code or?
That could be an avenue.
Yes, okay.
Uh, I have a question, please. Uh, the existing building, which we know is right next to it, you showed one, one slide that had both lot one and lot three.
Correct.
Um, what is the height of that, the highest part of the roof on?
Um, I don't know if we know that, uh, the applicant could probably speak to that, but it's a two-story building. It does have the pitched roof, so it would be measured to the midpoint.
It's pretty good pitch on that roof.
Right.
Not as much of a pitch as on this one. I'm just curious, you know, where the midpoint on that roof is.
It's, I think it's safe to assume it's under forty-five feet i- in the elevations provided with the ascent. Um, you know, that midpoint being just above the existing fourth floor, it's a, I, I think a a pretty big height difference between the proposed building and the existing, although the existing does. I think the second floor on the existing building is a little bit taller than maybe a normal second floor. Can't really speculate more than that, but it, you know, it's a relatively recent addition and it would have been under the forty-five feet.
And while we're talking, where is lot two?
Lot two is the, what the crater, it's kind of the larger area. I can go back to.
Cause I can't find lot two.
Maybe one of the earlier maps. Yeah, it's just basically just the remainder of the Meyer lot.
So lot three is split off or broken off of lot two, so.
Yeah, that'll be the.
Smaller lot three becomes a lot.
So right now, the current configuration and you could maybe, oh, let me reshare. It might be a little hard to see the underlying property lines here, but the, the larger area to the south, all the way to County Road seventy-two is lot two, and then all the way to the east to the bank is lot two. Lot one is just with the, um, the existing building on it. The case for the planning commission later today is gonna go through that subdivision where it'll basically carve out an additional lot three out of most of lot one, but.
Not anywhere.
Right, right. Yeah.
What's that?
It is.
Yeah. It is confusing.
I, I just, in going through my preparation, I, I couldn't find anywhere where I saw the larger lot two that, that three is carved out of.
Right.
So I, I think just to further, further clarify, lot two is the existing Meyer Lot Two, which would be modified by this proposal. Staff recommended that this new lot be called lot three, but we certainly recognize that it does create some confusion to have lot one and lot three as part of the same development, a separate lot two. We initially thought that would be less confusing than renaming Meyer Lot Two, but I recognize that it does create some confusion, so.
So any other questions?
Go back to the left.
You mentioned this, if approved, would be valid for one year. It's that ticket, a building permit, OCO.
That, that's our recommendation, that it tracks with the larger site plan, should the site plan be approved. And then at that point, yes, it would be at, um, building, building permit issuance.
Okay.
I just don't want the site plan to, to expire and, and this not expire, so they're, you have same time period.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Um, I mean, I, I like the look of this building and I'm, I'm I think I'm, I don't see a problem with this variance, but I am curious of the shade that it'll send. Will it, it's, it's set pretty far back, but will it hit the trail? Will it hit Highway forty? I'm just kind of curious.
I, I, you know, I don't know how much we can necessarily speculate on that with actual analysis, but it's it's a considerable distance from the trail. There's the parking spaces, which are about twenty feet. There's the drive aisle, which is you know, twenty-five, thirty feet, and then there's a little additional space between the property line and the trail, so you're looking at what's that, fifty, sixty feet there, taller than the building, so it would probably only impact the trail at you know, real low spots of the sun, like sunset maybe.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions for staff on the staff report? Let's move on to.
So just to be clear. The proposed development or construction, new construction that would occur is just south of the existing, what do we call it, XL Sports or something?
Exports, yeah.
Exports.
The business.
Um, and there are there are essentially three buildings within that footprint, right?
Of the current building?
No, no, not the current building. The proposed, uh, lot three that's going to be developed is there three buildings?
Oh, it's, it's one building with, and I, I think I described it in the staff report as kind of two separate building footprints connected by a common hallway stairwell area.
Okay, but just different roof.
Yeah, the height.
And levels.
Exactly, the, the south.
Each of the buildings.
The southerly portion is just the three-story portion of it, connected with a hallway stairwell to the north portion of the new building, which will be four stories. And then to the north of that is the existing building.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
Can you put the picture back up again, something? Yeah.
All right, and so on that fourth floor of the building next to the exports or just south of the exports, how many units are in there?
In the building itself?
On the fourth level?
Oh, on the fourth, just two units. So each floor of that four floor segment is two units per floor.
Okay.
And there's no.
Eight total in that building.
There's none on the ground level, right?
Units, there are.
Oh.
Yeah, so there's two units on four floors, essentially eight units on the north portion.
Oh, misunderstood.
The south portion of the building is three units on three floors, so nine units total.
Well, eight units in the converted.
That'll, yeah, that's part of the proposal is to convert.
That's how we get to 25. Right?
Yeah.
That's how we get to 25.
Yeah, exactly. So eight, 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 and then seven, nine.
Sports building.
Correct.
And then eight, that's 16, and then the difference is.
And then nine in the south building, correct.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready to move to the report from the applicant?
Chair, may I intervene? We can have a public work staff that can change that better if you want to take a quick moment and allow them to comment.
I'll be here with the lab.
Yeah, just.
Sure, you bet. Yeah, let's take care of that. Yeah, we'll take.
That'd be good.
And the really flat site does create a unique circumstance that isn't necessarily found in any other, many other sites in, in the Fraser Valley. So again, these are just some additional renderings that show this building and these are really more from eye level or street level. And so you can kind of see, you know, I think this kind of pans from, from north kind of to south as we go through these years. You can kind of see how the, so it's the building in the back. Probably can't see my, my mouse, but it's, it's kind of that building back there is the one that we're talking about. And it really again is only the one side of the building because it is a pitched roof. So it's kind of the high side of that roof that really is, is what's in question here. What we're having conversation about. So this is a view kind of straight on. You can kind of see how putting, pushing that building back, it really doesn't seem taller at all. Then, then the other buildings and it actually is a good massing and fits quite well. With what it is, we're trying to do from an architectural perspective for sure.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
To my earlier question, Clark, maybe you can answer it. What's the midpoint on the height of the pitched roof? On the ski broker or the exports?
Well, I can tell you that the peak of the ski broker, that the top of the peak,
Yeah.
of the gable is 40 feet. Measured from finished floor. Okay. So on the building plans, it's a 40 foot tall building to the peak. The, that roof's big, it's probably a 30 foot midline point if we were to draw the midline on that building. Approximately. On the gable.
And Clark, that whole building becomes living units then.
That's correct. We're, we're still working out the interior layouts. We have two, uh, units up there now. And um, we think it's a pretty appropriate fit. It's worked pretty well. Um, and the architects are working on, uh, layouts. For that, we, we would like to, uh, and will propose in the next meeting. We're going to adjust the site plan very slightly to, because it's in a weird fractional area to accommodate 27 units, which would put 10 units in that building. Which is what the architects think is in, so there's two existing, so eight more. And it just seems to be more appropriate with kind of the split storefronts and the layouts and having some access corridors and things that they're, they don't have that figured out yet, but they're working on it. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, another view, south looking a little bit north. I think you kind of see the building in question. It's kind of peeking out kind of behind the, the front building there at, and that's the highest point that we're actually discussing tonight. Showing there. So now we get into words, which is not nearly as exciting. But you know, one thing that we do want to bring up it, that does, speaks to encode is the board of trust, or excuse me, the board of adjustments. And your ability to grant variances versus what staff can do. And I think that there's actually a great, uh, section, um, 191320 where it talks about appeals. And it says that, you know, where there are practical difficulties or hardships. In the way of carrying out the strict letter of the regulation contained in this chapter, the board of adjustment has the power to vary or modify the application. So that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Public safety and welfare secured and substantial justice done. I think the spirit of the ordinance is really important. It kind of gives you, you as the board, a little bit more latitude than staff would have per se. I mean, staff really has to kind of follow the letter of the law criteria and that's their job. And so that's fine. Um, but that gives you, you as a board, a little bit more latitude. In this, and additionally, um, I would say that in the staff report, you know, staff was conceptually in support of our proposal. They just didn't have the tools by which to be able to approve it. So kind of wanted to throw that out there that, you know, we feel strongly that, that you as a board of adjustment do. So, um, again, the criteria for approval, there are seven of them, six of which are applicable here. And so again, the unique physical circumstances or other conditions peculiar to the property. You know, again, it exhibits unique physical circumstances due to the high groundwater table and the flat topography. The elevated groundwater level restricts subsurface construction such as basements or deep foundations, which are typically feasible on other sites. Additionally, the flat terrain provides, provides no natural elevation or slope to aid the drainage or spatial design. Distinguishing from this property from others that actually could be benefited, could benefit from a little bit of varied topography. So we think that those two combined actually make this unique. And not necessarily something that's found kind of throughout, throughout the town. So, you know, again, we don't think it's something that is, this condition, um, is common across the neighboring zoning districts because of those two combined physical constraints of this site. Obviously it's not a pre-existing condition on our end. And, you know, I would say that, you know, with the high groundwater and flat topography, strict adherence to the building height specifically, um, is, is a hardship for our property. So we, you know, request kindly, request, um, that you grant us this variance based on those hardships associated with this land and this property. And I'm sure Clark will add.
Well, I think, you know, as we've gone through this, um, I, I think the architects did a really nice job of, of creating this building in this project and integrating it nicely. It's, it's going to be a nice compliment. The current building's cool, you know? Sad to see it's changed a little, but yeah, it's way better than the Taco John's that was there as you all might still remember. And, and I made that modification. Then I asked them when we were looking at this to, I want it to just blend seamlessly. And, and really fit in, not be matchy-match, but you know, very complimentary. I think they did that. I think they did a good job. While we were going through this, and I don't know if the slides in here, Leila. The one with the, uh, adjusted height. What, what we found, and it gets to the point of asking about midpoints. So, this is a drawing. We, we, we can modify this building. Okay. And, and meet the letter of your code to a T. This is a stepped building. And what this depicts is taking the south building that we had lower. And raising the gable roof to where the midpoint of the roof is 45 feet tall. And what that does is in a stepped building situation, the highest segment of the building, which becomes the peak is the controlling line. And as you can see, if we were to go down this road, all of the building in question is underneath that line. And that has to do with the definition of hide in your code, going to the midpoint of a gable roof. So, if you guys prefer this as opposed to doing a variance, we can have the architects change this. And then it's in strict compliance with your code. I didn't want to go down that road unless y'all said, you know what? We like it the other way or yeah, that's good. But I think it gets to the heart of what she was talking about with the spirit of the code. We're going to meet, meet the code by telling the architects, hey, go raise the gable roof. It's a little awkward. I, I don't like necessarily. I was trying to create more of a stepping effect by having the three level and the four level and then kind of back down to the ski broker. I think it creates some, some interesting indulation. But we believe this is letter of the law. So if, if you guys said, we don't want to do the board of adjustments, do that, Clark. Well, I'll have the architects change it. Really, I, I'm kind of giving it to you guys to say, what do you prefer? Cause I, I'm happy either way. But I mean, it was me being heavily involved in this review and sitting down and go, guys, if you raise the south buildings, gable roof, the highest segment's the peak of the roof. The whole thing's underneath it. So, so I think this is a really good example of how we can meet your code with this building. I think it affects the architectural character, what I was trying to achieve just a little. I can live with it either way. I think there's so much going on, on this building. And great windows, lots of sidings and lots of breaks and wall planes. There's a lot in and out. That, you know, it, other than me, no one else would probably know the difference. Right? So, um, so I'm kind of punting to you guys and saying, we can do this, or you can grant the variance that we're asking and proceed with what was submitted. I'm happy either way.
So just to, not to put you on the spot, Alan, but does that meet the code or?
Yeah, I'm, Garrett and I might need to discuss this too, because we hadn't seen this proposal or considered this, but my, my initial take is, it's potentially not because the segment of the building, the height definition still talks about a particular segment of the building.
Okay. Well, not, not to get into.
Yeah, I would initially think that this, this north portion is a separate segment, but.
So Clark, remind us, what, what's going to be behind this building on the, on the big parcel?
On the rest of Meyer Lot Two, it's going to be more residential.
No, across, um, what's going to be Twilight, what is that Twilight? The back row there, because we're looking at all the impacts to the, to the east kind of, but what are the impacts to the west?
It'll be, it will be residential.
It's going to be residential. That's all part of the Meyer Lot Two. That was part of Forest Meadows Solar Subdivision.
Okay.
And, and go back to that page please, because I just want to, I, I have your code in here.
Yeah.
And it, you know, it, it very clearly says the height of a stepped or terraced building is the maximum height of any segment of the building. Guys.
Yeah.
The, the, the peak is the highest segment of the building. So there's no question. I mean, I think we should just clear this up for your staff now. So that they don't get put into an awkward position and we're not delayed further.
I, I can make that determination right now. If you just clarify, the four-story building that's currently shown here is unmodified from the current proposal.
Correct.
Then no, we would still measure from the midpoint of the sloped roof on the four-story side of the building. That is the maximum height of one of the, the other segment of the building. Just because you raised the top point of the gabled roof on the other segment. I, I mean, we're, we're not measuring height from the top of the gabled roof anyways. So you've, you've effectively increased the height of the three-story segment to 45 feet. But the height of the four-story segment remains unchanged.
That's correct. And that meets the definition of your code to a T. It says or, and so the tallest part of the building in this scenario becomes the three-level building. And the peak of that roof, and that is the highest segment. I mean, this is kind of why we're here, guys.
Yeah, Clark, we're headed down a road here that you brought up an excellent.
We'd like to have some clarity.
Let me just finish. And Margaret brought up an excellent point too. The other approach to variances is to look at our code, to look at zoning, to look at ways that these, these buildings that make sense like this can conform.
Totally agree.
This, this is a, a point that you brought up, Clark, with our definition that staff can look at again. We've had long discussions, lots of rezonings lately.
Yeah.
Riverwalk District, for example, lots of, uh, density bonuses for affordable housing. These are all things that the variance committee would much rather have discussions at the town board level. And at the planning commission level where everybody's elected or appointed by elected officials, we are here too. But variances are a, a court of last resort. And so I, I, I think we're in the right spot to talk about this because this is a pretty minor variance. Makes a lot of sense, but it's not the, not the proper venue.
Totally agree.
For addressing these issues. So, but anyway, I, that, you, your definition here is a good one to discuss outside of this room where we're not so constrained for time. And, and, and all, all these things help us fine tune our code and you've helped us all the way along to do that. So. Okay. Anything else with more with the presentation?
You have anything else? I don't believe we have anything else, unless anyone has questions.
Any, any more questions for the applicant?
Just one for me, and that is, you mentioned something about if you were to drop the finished floor elevation by 1.7 feet. Making it equivalent to the lowest elevation pre-grading. Correct? You said you could do that, which would then reduce the variance you're asking for from four and a half feet would reduce it down to almost two feet.
No, you, you can't do that, but her point is the unique circumstance here is how flat this is.
Yeah.
Bob, and in order for drainage to work around the building, we have to build the side up with earth. So the code reads from the lowest existing point, not from the finished floor elevation of the building. So we're building the side up 1.7 feet. Let's just say simple math, it was two feet. If you built it up two feet, now you're building height to the measured point can only be 43 feet. Because they measure from the existing grade.
Existing grade.
So, so you got two feet of dirt that counts against you in order to make drainage work on a really flat site.
Yeah, you want the building.
That's where.
Yeah.
In, in a lot of instances, some topography and indulation, which we have predominantly all over the valley is very helpful. Because then you're not having to build buildings up to get proper drainage around them. It'll, you can shed off around them on a slope, for instance.
Good. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, board discussion. I mean, I, I, I think Margaret, your point was excellent and, and we need to look at ways to prevent these things from happening. I think the argument about groundwater is it's everywhere in Fraser. Fraser's pretty, pretty flat. I spent my whole career building, telling people not to build basements. I can't tell you how many owners I talked out of garden level or basements. Unless they have a walkout that you can fully drain to one side. So that's not really a unique circumstance. I think it is, it is fairly unique. It's flat, but that's pretty common. We've got a pretty flat town too. They've made it work right. I like the design. I mean, I, I think, you know, they could go back to a flat roof and make this work too. I don't think any of us really want to see that. So.
Yeah, I'm really conflicted because Phil's, I, I like the design. I like their quest. But I'm having trouble because I, I kind of agree with staff. It doesn't quite meet the requirements of a variance. I, I kind of agree with that, but yet I want to approve this so he can move forward. I think we need to definitely look at whatever the issue is, it keeps coming up over and over with height. You know, with height issues, we, we need to provide some better flexibility in our code for those developments that are not PD developments to allow things like that with this, without going through the variance process, which should, to me, should be just really rare circumstances for, for variances. It really needs to meet those criteria. So we're kind of stretching it here to, to grant this variance based on the criteria. And yet, I feel like we need to move forward with this project and move on. That's, that's kind of my feeling, sort of ambivalent.
Leila's point was, was well taken though, then that's why staff should be very strict to the code.
Yeah.
But the, the planning, the variance board should have a little bit more latitude as far as trying to see if it meets the spirit of, of, of the zone. But again, I, I do hope that if, if we do grant this, I hope the applicant and the town, we continue. I said it on your workshop the other day. And this height, height and density is extremely important. Atlantic Magazine this month, their cover story was on the huge change in America where we don't move anymore. A lot of that's tied to housing costs.
Yeah.
Everybody wants to move to San Francisco where the jobs are, but you can't move to San Francisco because there's no housing. You know, and a lot of it's zoning related. A lot of this is, is, uh, is the fact that you can't get the density you need to get, get prices down. And their, their point in the, in the application about providing more housing, I get that, but we don't have any control over the price of this housing, of course. And that's why a lot of our density bonuses are tied to some kind of mechanism where the housing remains affordable. So, but I think, I think you're right, Margaret. I mean, I'm, I'm conflicted too. I, I have said in the past, we had, we had a previous height variance request for the same property, right? It was in that, in that overall.
It was a blanket.
Was it?
Garrett?
Multiple lots, as I recall.
That was that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one from September of 2023.
Yeah, there was multiple lots.
And it was multiple lots. And this, at least we're looking at a plan, we're looking at a particular site. But at that time, we did talk about trying to go back to the drawing board for some of our zones and our heights. And, and I hope we continue down that road. So we're not faced with this sort of decision. So.
Okay.
Well, and I'd, I'd like to add that the town, like within Grand Park, within Rendezvous, it's a four corners, um, average. And I think that makes a lot more sense for the entire town.
Totally.
Of course, it's not our code now, so that's why we're here looking at this variance. But I think that is something that the town should move towards, um, looking at the corners. And I mean, if you look at this property, the majority of it is well under 45 feet. It's just the, the very top of the sloped roof that's not, and it's set back. So it doesn't even give the feeling that it's over 45 feet. So I think they've done a good job of it.
Yeah, I like the design. What do you think, Bob?
Well, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joy, you came in. Yeah. So Joy, sorry. Uh, Joy McCoy has joined the meeting. Sorry.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, I did look at all the, the notes on the, um, agenda sheet and in general, the height variance is minimal and in general.
This is the board of adjustment.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, okay.
And I know that we discussed before about the appropriateness of a board of adjustment for height variances like this that are going to be more frequent. So. Yep. Thanks for having me, everyone.
Yeah, sorry.
And, uh, I'd just like to add that I agree with Margaret. I think, uh, this is a minimum request for a variance. And I will say that although there's been a lot said about groundwater being kind of all over the valley. There is something I noticed about this site that going back and looking at their geotechnical report. The, uh, site has fill on it. Several feet, up to six feet in some places. And it also has a lot of clayey material mixed in with sands, so sandy clays, clayey sands. We all know that in this area, it's possible to have very clayey material. And that clayey material can create what's called a perched groundwater table. The actual groundwater table can be lower than where the water collects in these clayey sandy soils and is trapped and held there. So I would argue that a perched groundwater table, which I sent, seem to think might be the case here. I can't tell you for sure. But you had two test pits that had no water in it. You had one test pit that the water was within six feet of the ground surface. Two test pits, no groundwater down to eight or nine feet, whatever the depth was. What that's saying to me, plus looking at the logs, the boring logs and the clayiness of the materials near the surface and particularly the fill material. I think you may be looking at a trapped groundwater condition. That doesn't mean it will go away. It may stay there because if you get wet conditions, that material will trap the water and create some drainage issues for you. So I'm kind of of the opinion that I might be inclined to say, maybe this is a unique conditioned groundwater on this site. And because I like the site plan, I like the look of the buildings, we're asking for a minimal variation to make the original plan work without monkeying around with roof levels. I'm inclined to say this might be a case where we grant the exception.
Thanks, Bob. Any other thoughts?
So I like the plan. I like the way you set it back with that extra height. And I want to appeal to the philanthropic side of you that you consider adding some workforce housing into these units, indeed restricting several of them. It's not part of how I'm going to vote, but I will ask you to look at doing that.
Okay. Any other thoughts? We have a list of conditions.
Andy, I would just, uh,
Yep.
I'd like to point out the wording in the code. So you are aware from the staff report that there's seven criteria you have to meet. And the one that we're all focusing on is, is this a unique condition to this property? So, um, you need to find, if you're going to grant this, that there's a unique condition attributable to this property. If you can't find that there's a unique condition that justifies the variance, you could rely on the provision that Leila pointed out. But you would have to point it, you would have to find that there's a practical difficulty or an unnecessary hardship here. And that's why you're going above and beyond and outside the code requirement in the variance.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with Kent and you've given us another unique, uh, a reason for it being unique. That Bob, your groundwater analysis that we can maybe hang our hats on. We're looking for some way to justify that we agree with that it's a unique piece of property.
So, but Kent, it also talks about not violating the spirit of the, of the, of the restriction too, doesn't it, or?
Well, it's, it's basically that provision that Leila pointed us to in 191320. It says, where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the regulations contained in this chapter. The board adjustment has the power in passing upon an appeal to vary or modify the application of such regulations relating to the construction or alteration of buildings or structure. So that the spirit of the ordinance is observed.
So the spirit of the ordinance. So that we have the seven, seven, um,
So what, what is the spirit of the ordinance? What is that spirit? What does it say?
What I, what I'm searching for Kent is to, to my way of thinking, the spirit of the ordinance is that the height, that the height, um, the extra height doesn't adversely affect the neighborhood, doesn't adversely affect the zoning. You know, it just becomes a.
Well, the, the spirit of the ordinance is the, the variance ordinance.
Right.
So the spirit of the ordinance is, um, having some framework to follow consistently. So that you, you don't willy-nilly grant variances for different reasons every time. You have some standards that you weigh against a variance request every time and you, that's the spirit.
Right. So it doesn't really, the, the, um, the seven, seven reasons don't address that the extra two and a half feet is not going to adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood or there's really nothing that speaks to that.
Well, it does because if we went through each one of these, like the staff did and said, we agree with this one. The staff only disagreed with two of them.
Right.
So, or, or three?
Three.
So then what we need to do is overrule specifically.
Yeah.
With a valid reason.
Three reasons why they did not, we're disagreeing with that and saying, no, we agree that the, um, that it's unique, that it's not a self-imposed, that we go through each of these and find, make our own conclusion as to each one of these. Correct? So what you're saying.
It has to meet all seven of them or just?
Well, what I'm saying is that's the criteria for variance.
Right.
And if you want to vary from that criteria, then you need to find some practical difficulty or a necessary hardship to justify that variance.
So, and it's six out of seven, but seven doesn't apply.
You could.
Five out of six.
Katie, you, you could find that there's like Bob is suggesting that there, there's a unique circumstance here to just this property.
And I guess just to clarify on the number of criteria to be met, here's this seventh variance criteria.
Yeah, which is not.
Which is not applicable in this case. And in general, it's not applicable. But the, the text of the code says that the board of adjustment may grant a variance only to the extent it finds that the following conditions are present. So the staff's interpretation is that to grant the variance, all six, uh, or if the seventh is applicable, the seventh as well must be met. But again, just to reemphasize Kent's, uh, uh, statement, uh, with regards to the appeal specifically, it speaks to that practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship.
And that's really hard to argue. I'm sorry. I understand your, your groundwater point, but this whole town is underlaying with groundwater. So.
Were there any public comments from the neighbors surrounding?
Um, I did not, uh, staff did not receive any, um, public comment ahead of this, uh, meeting.
Or calls or anything like that. Okay.
Is there anybody here from the public that needs to speak? It's a public hearing.
We can open up for public comment if you'd like.
Yeah, we had an openness for public comments. Any members of the public who wanted to speak to this variance?
Uh, my representative, uh, the Murdoch Center. They're fine with it. It doesn't affect anything that's going on at the Murdoch Center. And I don't think it'll shade the road any more than the bank lot does or a vicious cycle does. So. So we're for it. We think it's a good plan.
So just curious, Parnell, with the Murdoch Center, if there were a discussion of changing the B-zone to allow higher heights or more latitude for rough lines, would that be something you think the owners there would be interested in? I mean, that site's developed already, but obviously it's, they're thinking about the future and possible changes there and.
Yeah, they had talked about doing some apartments. Yeah, they had talked about doing some apartments or condos above the buildings at some point, but the height was so limited that it didn't make sense. So
Yeah.
I would think that they would be for it.
Yeah.
And it'd be a great place to have some extra employee housing.
Yeah, and I mean, in in many ways, this whole area screams for higher heights. Um, and a lot more so than in my neighborhood does, for instance.
Right.
Um, so I I think that's definitely a discussion at the town on how to start pointing towards, so.
And it's actually the Fraser Valley Center. Sorry, I said Murdoch Center.
Yeah, no worries. Thanks, Parnell.
How quickly, how, saying this aside for one second, how quickly could you, could we get some sort of change to the code that would allow for um some, you know, flexibility that we're talking about versus how how long would that take?
Right.
Years, months?
It it could be a matter of months. Um, staff is already planning to bring a a series of proposed ordinances uh amendments to chapter nineteen to the Planning Commission in March uh on the twenty-sixth. Um, if the Planning Commission chooses to recommend approval of those ordinances, they would then advance to the board. Um, they could advance to the board as soon as the first week in April, that first Wednesday. Um, if we need more time to uh incorporate any changes or proposals that the Planning Commission would like to see before they advance to the board, uh, we may schedule it in the second meeting of April. Uh, but and then if the board approves those ordinances, they uh are actually, they actually take effect or in are enforceable thirty days after publication that the ordinance is passed. Um, so we're talking about May, early June at the fastest.
So a faster maybe route would be looking at, so we have our existing density bonuses in exchange for deed restricted housing. If we worked with that to also include a height bonus into deed restricted housing, X amount, ten, fifteen, twenty percent. That would be moved forward a little bit faster and I think it would meet the needs of the community.
I I'm not sure how we could advance that any faster than any other amendment to chapter nineteen.
Okay.
Um, I I think to implement a height bonus program as you described would require amending something in chapter nineteen.
Okay.
Uh, which which means that's to go to the Planning Commission and then the the board.
What's what's the timing on your project realistically? What's the timing?
They're very close to finish drawings.
We we kind of raised this flag during that previous variance request, so.
We we do have to, we have, we have infrastructure relocation and and that's already approved. My construction plans are done. That's a part of a separate project that needs to be done first. Because this building is sitting over where there's actually a current sewer line. That's already planned to be relocated, so. So that work has to be done first, then the building will drop right behind the infrastructure relocation. Sometime this summer.
I should prefer the regulatory route. Um, I, you know, with Kent's point is is excellent. We really is, I I'm sorry, but geology aside, I I don't tell anybody, but I've got an old surface well in the back of my hundred-year-old house and I look at the water level and it's typically during the summer, it's at four feet and right now it's around four feet. So we've got, we've got surface water. We're sitting on top of a millennial plane, so and there's a lot of fill there, you're right, Bob. I mean, we basically built the whole town on on fill. So um basements just really aren't, basements, even garden levels are are really problematic. They do it in Telluride, for instance, but boy, it takes a lot of pumping and and ground, ground uh, ground drainage and and we're not to the point where real estate's quite worth that much. We'll probably get there, but not really unique, so.
Kent, have you ever seen a reason for variance that the the project aligns with the town's overall goals? Is that something that exists?
Well, I think what I'm sensing is you all want to approve this. We just don't have a code that's in line with the approval right now.
Yeah.
And to be in line with the code, which I think is what you want to maintain at your, at these meetings. You probably either need to table it or and then amend the code or find one of these reasons and state it on the record that it it's a unique circumstance. Or if it's not a unique circumstance, that there's a practical difficulty or an unnecessary hardship that you want to address to be in line with the spirit of the code. And that's kind of, that's probably the best to answer your a- along the lines of what you're asking, Brian. Um, I think what you're asking is, is there flexibility? Is there discretion here?
Okay.
That provision that Leila pointed out is probably your best discretionary provision that you have. But you have to find those things to use it, practical difficulties, unnecessary hardship.
Just another thought, um, they're putting an elevator in this. Are the, does that make all the building, um, they're all ADA compliant? So so why is number seven like being crossed out? I guess I would say the applicant first identified criteria seven is not applicable and staff agreed with that assessment. The height itself, I would argue, is not really related to ADA accessibility. I I recognize that elevators have to be provided for uh buildings four stories and height or greater, but I I I don't think, you can still design a four-story height within a, the forty-five feet height limit, for example. Um, I I don't think accessibility and height necessarily relate in that way.
It's another excellent code revision is we want to encourage this type of roofline.
Right.
So we don't want a flat roof building just to get to forty-five feet, but that's what we're driving the applicant to do here. And uh, but unfortunately, this isn't the venue for that. The venue for that is the town board and the planning commission to change the code, so. And I would say let's, my suggestion is we deny this and and let's head right down the code route. Because we can't understand that there are time constraints with the applicant, but again, we discussed this several months ago and we looked at at a blanket height variance, so.
But when we discussed it, Andy, I thought the idea was that we were gonna wrap this whole thing up in the current, you know, plan, the next ten-year plan. And we were gonna come back with our ten-year plan and all of the changes that we thought we ought to make. Problem is, you know, while we're waiting through the ten-year plan and take care of all these changes to the codes and stuff like that, you know, progress needs to happen. We need housing and in the spirit of the code and in the spirit of what the town would like to see happen here. I think that we would like this project to go forward, so whatever we could do to either find that the spirit of the code could be tweaked a little bit in this case so that we can proceed. Uh, versus uh, do we need to take some swifter action to change our code?
I need to take swifter action.
So and if we denied it, it's dead in the water versus tabling it, then it can come back.
We won't need it.
No, it only it only could come back under the variance board again. And and once the code's changed, it goes to the regular process, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, once the code is
We wanted to comment from there.
There is a practical difficulty with that, just because of the time restraint. So
Yeah.
That could be
I get that.
Considered practical difficulty.
I don't know, Kent.
Maybe. I mean.
I mean, there's a lot of latitude in those words.
Practical.
Right.
Practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships. I mean, that's a subjective call essentially on your part.
Yeah, that
But I I would just recommend if you're gonna go that way, enumerate the practical difficulties that you've found or the unnecessary hardships.
Okay, I'm gonna make a proposal to approve the variance based upon the practical difficulties of waiting this is trying to get the wording correctly, of the applicant having to wait an unknown period of time to begin construction. And also, um, that I, that the fiscal circumstances are unique um because of the groundwater and potentially the the groundwater situation.
Drainage.
Drainage. That's what I'm I'm gonna propose. You need to modify that to make it more, you know, sustainable, but that's kind of the gist of it.
Is this a motion?
It is a motion.
Okay.
Okay, you took some notes there, you wanna?
Sure, I'll go ahead and
Make it better.
Give me one moment. So we did provide this draft resolution in the packet, um, and it's written in a way so that it could either be an approval or a denial resolution for the appeal. Um, I started to type out this highlighted whereas statement, um, because and suggestion, there's if if this appeal is granted, there should be some sort of determination that a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship exists um pursuant to section nineteen one three twenty. Um, so I can continue drafting that based on what Commissioner Bowles was saying.
I've got that resolution somewhere in my mind.
In that case, would we be removing the criteria then from the resolution? The six criteria statements that are following in this, and just standing on that one appeal section?
I think it'd be more of a notwithstanding that that uh specific criteria was not met or could be met if that's the motion on the table.
Wait a minute, say that again.
Well, I mean, I guess Commissioner Bowles, you're finding that there is a unique circumstance, right?
Yeah, my question to you is, what if we don't find that? Or you're saying notwithstanding, we're not agreeing that it's unique, but what we're saying is that the practical difficulties overrides
Yep.
the fact that we didn't find a unique circumstances.
Yep, so
And that would be sufficient, legally sufficient?
Yep, so notwithstanding the requirements in
Then I withdraw the uniqueness because I, I
Yep.
All we're doing is finding a practical difficulty.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's for number four.
Yeah, okay.
Cannot be reasonably developed because of the um time constraints.
Yes.
And then the other two are subject to the
He's got some language up here.
Oh, good.
Uh, so I I guess for the board of adjustment and for Kent, the highlighted text there says whereas the board of adjustment finds that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict regulations of the Fraser Land Development Code pursuant to the code reference. Notwithstanding that not all of the applicable variance criteria have been met, um, and continuing down, we would remove uh, we would, um, for each of the criteria, we would say met or not met. Um, I'd still approve the appeal. Does that meet kind of
So can you So we're saying we believe that they have been met. No, no.
No.
But nevertheless.
We're saying nevertheless, maybe they are some met, but not all met, but nevertheless in the spirit of what we believe is good for the town and and our community, we're granting the variance. That's what I'm saying, at least. And I and I I will second Margaret's
Whatever that motion was.
Hang on a second. We gotta close the public hearing first.
Okay.
Garrett's working on a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
We had one other member of the public that wanted to say something or we have one other member of the public that wanted to say something.
I'm glad, but I was gonna say a similar thing to Joy, that just you could say the unique circumstances are the building next to it and creating an attractive product or undue hardship with time for waiting for something to happen when we all know the building season's so short. I do think that's a hardship, so I was just gonna echo. Say what she said.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay.
All in all, all in favor?
I
I.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so Garrett's working on something here, let's
While he's doing that, I just want to clarify that the, so it's the elevator shaft that is kind of the fifty-one It doesn't count into that, okay?
Allowed to have that.
All right, so it's just like four point five feet of height variance. On the slope roof, okay. Are we all in general consensus of thinking that this is in general fits the neighborhood and isn't obstructive and seems like
The the variance committee is, is is strictly tied to certain, only certain reasons to give variances. Very unique circumstances, that's why
I know he's spelling those out.
Isn't reviewable by even the town board, so, so it's a pretty strict set of criteria as to how this varies, I mean, it could have, so.
Practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships and unique conditions are very subjective terms. So I really just wanted to get the general idea if everyone was leaning one way or another.
Well, we're trying to, trying to make it work more.
I'll make it.
Yeah, but it's, but that's more of a subjective decision. It should be more of an ob- objective decision in this case, so.
Well, Bob had two valid points about the drainage and the mix in the clay. Um, one ground level was at nine foot and one was at four foot or whatever. And that and that's unusual versus
The other thing is, you don't, it's not showing a homogeneous flat groundwater table. And groundwater tables can rise and fall with seasons.
Oh, yeah.
Just because we measured it at six feet today, doesn't mean that well, uh, when whenever they did the report within the last month or two. Doesn't mean that during the wet seasons, when us, we get all the snow melt and all the runoff, that groundwater table could be closer to two or three feet.
Yeah.
Well, you just said, Andy, that your groundwater in your well gets within two or three feet.
Yeah.
So
So
I'm saying that
Yeah.
That
I get you.
Maybe
Why can't we just say, if that's the case, and you're talking about the different levels, which does make it a little more unusual to some degree, why can't we just make that as the qualifier for number one and number two and say that they meet that?
We can.
We could.
So that's perfect, that's kind of what I would like to do is say that it meets it because of this study that they did that you were referring to. Um, and those different anyway, to me, that kind of validates that.
Yeah, I mean
And
A perched groundwater condition is an unusual condition from a general area.
Yeah.
If you have the right soil deposits that trap and hold water, if you would make a cut, you might get water coming into the excavation.
The reason, the reason the code leans so heavy on unique though is that we could, everybody in town could say, I gotta go higher because I can't get a basement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's that, that's a general condition and the town is built on a former wetland, so.
I just hate passing this as a resolution and leaving not met on there. Seems like we should be able to come up with a valid reason to justify them, those three things being met. That's where I'm
Yeah.
I do want to prove it. I like it.
It it opens the door. That's the trouble to the same discussion happening on numerous other lots. And that's, that's why the size of the lot
All right, let's see what he's come up with.
Okay.
So I I again, I the highlighted text here is what's been added. The first whereas statement speaks to the board of adjustment finding practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships. And the second whereas statement uh comes from that same section of the code nineteen one three twenty E. Uh, stating that the board of adjustment has the authority when granting an appeal to vary or modify the application of Stating that the Board of Adjustment has the authority when granting an appeal to vary or modify the application of these regulations. I I do think. Based on what Kent said. This approval resolution could still note that certain variance criteria are not met. But that the appeal is granted anyways because of this text, because the Board of Adjustment has found that their. Practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships.
You agree with that?
I agree, yes.
Okay.
Could they be sufficiently met?
So then, I can't see it well enough to tell how you're delineating what was met and what was not.
So I think the Board of Adjustment would need to make that determination.
Okay. Be right now, and then you can.
Yeah.
Cross it out?
Yes.
Okay, so. Missy, you have the. So we've got. Well, I think one and two. We're we're saying three or. One, two, and four. Are the ones that were.
Not met.
Not met. I don't think that's changed. Okay, physical condition.
So one, two, and four are not met.
Okay.
Right.
But we're gonna grant.
Yeah, those were the ones identified in the staff report.
Yeah.
And we're agreeing with that.
Okay.
What do we decide about seven? Is it in or out?
Even if it is, it's still.
Because they can do a disabled building that doesn't have. Disabled building doesn't have to have nine foot ceilings, for instance. So. So it's out, but both the both the applicant agreed that's out also, so. Yeah.
So just to read through this resolution again, as it's changed from what was provided in the packet. This resolution would approve the appeal to staff's denial of the administrative variance. Because the Board of Adjustment has found that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships. And that the Board has the authority in passing an appeal to vary or modify the application of such regulations. The Board of Adjustment finds that. The variance criteria have either been met or not met. In a way consistent with staff's evaluation of the criteria. But nonetheless, the appeal is granted.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
You're just so moved that would work.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, no worries, but let's go back to the code and let's.
Yeah, let's.
Yes.
Let's not wait on the.
Yeah.
The next round of planning.
Yeah, exactly.
Good change, agreed.
Okay, so we the second variance is to the. We'll move on to the variance to the Riverwalk District Commercial Frontage Requirement Central. Start with the staff report. We need to reopen a public hearing on this?
Uh, we do, yes.
Yes.
I move to open the public hearing second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Thank you. Hey. So we'll start with the staff report.
Uh, thank you Chair Miller, Garrett Scott, Town Planner. Uh, this item before the Board of Adjustment is a variance. For the proposed Centrum development related to the ground floor commercial frontage requirement in the Riverwalk Zone. Out West Investments is the applicant, Fraser Downtown LLC is the property owner. Uh, this property is located at one fifty Clayton Court, it's the southernmost lot on Clayton Court in between Highway forty and Clayton Court. Uh, the zoning is Riverwalk, and again, the request is to. Uh, modify the minimum depth requirement of ground floor commercial uses on Clayton Court. The applicant specifically requested that be modified from twenty feet to as low as zero feet in the portions of the lot with less than ninety feet in depth. Uh, here's a look at the property location. Um, so speaking to some of the recent planning efforts, twenty seventeen is when the downtown Fraser Strategic Plan was approved. Late in twenty twenty three is when we changed from the Riverwalk overlay into the new Riverwalk Zone District. And re-zoned area within the Riverwalk overlay into the new standalone Riverwalk Zone. Uh, as far as this application specifically. There have been two submittals of a sketch plan. That the Planning Commission reviewed in October of last year and last month in January. Uh, and then late January, the applicant submitted this variance request, which has led us to today's public hearing. Public notice was provided in Sky High News Middle Park Times two weeks ago on February twelfth. The applicant did mail notices to nearby property owners as well. And proof of publication in that affidavit of mailed notices are provided in the packet. Here's a look at the existing conditions of the site, kind of looking towards the northwest. Uh, from the intersection of Clayton Court and Clayton Avenue.
Or is it heavy equivalent, that's.
Yeah, existing conditions as of a year and a half ago, so, yeah. Here's a look at their proposed site plan, this is the sketch plan that you all, as the Planning Commission reviewed back in January. Uh, the image on the left includes the kind of overall vision for the property with phase two on the south and phase one in blue to the north. Uh, and then the image on the right just zooms in on that phase one portion, which is the subject of this variance request. Um, showing the kind of conceptual building footprint. Uh, and floorplay and layout demonstrating the extent to which the twenty feet commercial depth requirements. Can be met in some areas, but not others. Um, the applicant has provided this updated rendering, which varies slightly from what the Planning Commission saw in January. Uh, with pitched roofs, however, it's largely consistent, otherwise it includes first floor commercial uses through the majority of the frontage. And five residential units on the second and third stories of the building. Here's a look at the zoning map of the area, again, the property is zoned Riverwalk, largely surrounded by other properties zoned Riverwalk. Um, property zone business on the other side of Highway forty as well as open space parcels. Uh, across across Clayton Avenue. So, um, speaking to the zoning and land use, again, the Riverwalk District includes this ground floor commercial requirement for any uses along Clayton Court. You know, the existing uses in the area include a mix of residences and businesses that mostly predate the area's rezoning. Uh, as was mentioned, Clayton Court is currently under construction to install new utility lines and future street paving and streetscape improvements are planned. Here's the intent of the Riverwalk Zone District, I won't read that all off, but just two things to emphasize in this intent statement are. The creation of a high density walkable mixed use neighborhood and ground floor commercial. Uses positioned closely to the street. So here's the text of the specific. Portion of the Riverwalk District Zone. Uh, that a variance is being sought from. Um, specifically this language here, that properties on Clayton Court shall have ground floor commercial uses. And they should be required for a minimum of the first twenty feet in depth of the structure. So diving into how that twenty feet depth requirement relates to this site and specifically phase one. Uh, for the image on the left, the red dashed line shows that twenty feet depth line as measured from the property frontage with Clayton Court. Um, you can see that it. Does include. Most of this area. Kind of on the southern part of the building is within that twenty feet depth, uh, commercial uses. But it's just this northern portion of the building where it's only fifteen feet in depth and. Within that twenty feet line, there are these two residential parking garages for the proposed condo townhome units. Um, the image on the right shows several different measurements of lot depth, again, measured perpendicularly from the Clayton Court frontage. Uh, staff just wanted to note that where the applicant's ninety feet in depth request lies is roughly right here. Um, and. Per their sketch plan, they were showing. You know, within that, within areas of the property that are less than ninety feet in depth, they were able to accommodate at least twenty feet of commercial frontage. Whereas comparatively, the point of the property that is approximately seventy feet in depth. That's roughly the kind of dividing line to where the applicant's proposal no longer provided that twenty feet depth of commercial, is that making sense?
Yeah.
So the request was only for the. Anything below seventy feet in depth?
Ninety.
The applicant's request was ninety feet in lot width, any portion of the lot. Uh, narrower than ninety feet would be exempt.
And then the unique circumstance, do we have any other lots down here narrower than ninety feet or?
I I don't believe so, and I'll speak to some of the.
Yeah.
Criteria momentarily.
Is that that number could relate to that?
Sure. Um, so so again, just to emphasize, the the ninety feet lot depth that was requested. In this variance appears to apply to a greater area than was considered during the Planning Commission's review of the sketch plan. Staff determined that. Um, granting a variance that considers portions of the lot that are seventy feet. Or less in depth would be consistent with the sketch plan. Um, so if the Board of of Adjustment approves this variance, it's recommended that. Um, that just be clarified as a condition of approval. And we we also provide some suggestions as far as what can be considered, you know, street level activation. So just running through the various variance criteria approval. The unique physical circumstances in this case are, you know, the shape of the lot. Um, it's also bounded by streets on three sides being Highway forty, Clayton Avenue and Clayton Court. Um, and again, the lot shape itself, it. Uh, it it narrows considerably as the lot goes to the north. Um, the lot shape is unique as most surrounding lots are more rectilinear in shape and do not narrow in depth to the degree of this lot. Uh, this is an existing condition to the site. The shape of this lot evolved from previous subdivisions over the past decades. Um, whereas the the ground floor commercial depth requirement is a relatively recent zoning requirement that was implemented in late twenty twenty three. Criteria four, staff did find that the property could not be reasonably developed in conformance with that ground floor depth requirement. Given the unique physical circumstances of the lot shape. Uh, the property is also encumbered by a water production well. Um, and several different easements, which further, in addition to the narrow lot width, create difficulties with meeting. The exact letter of that twenty foot depth requirement. If this variance is granted, it won't alter the character of the neighborhood. Um, it's, uh, it won't substantially impair adjacent properties. The proposal is still consistent with the overall vision for Clayton Court as a, you know, mixed use downtown walkable area with a commercial street frontage. And then criteria six, staff simply didn't find that this criteria was met because of that ninety feet in depth request. Uh, but staff believes that this criteria can be considered met if the variance request is modified slightly. To just exempt portions of the lot that are seventy feet in depth or less. So included on this slide are the two recommended conditions of approval for the variance. Again, the main point of condition of approval number one is just to specify that seventy feet in depth. Uh, town staff is certainly open to modifying that further if if requested, or if the Board of Adjustment finds appropriate to allow. Greater flexibility in terms of site design as the applicant. Um, finalizes their site plan and land use application. Uh, the second condition of approval simply ties the variance approval to the applicant's forthcoming, you know, site plan and subdivision application. Uh, by by giving it a one year duration of approval.
And again, we don't, we have any idea of other lots, narrowest of lots or. Um, their subdivision.
I can pull that up right now, um, so we can look at it.
Okay, so any other questions for staff? We'll take a look at that and then.
So just to be clear, the really what we're what you're recommending is that the only. The variance will apply only to those that those buildings that are seventy feet. In depth.
A lot narrow.
The lot, the lot.
Right.
Okay.
It would apply to any building built on portions of the lot that are seventy feet in depth or narrower.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then also Garrett, when they, when we first discussed the sketch plan, you talked about having to have. Frontage on Highway forty, we dropped that completely right.
Uh, that that is still part of the Riverwalk Zone Commercial Frontage Requirement, so properties that have frontage on Highway forty. Also have to have.
So is he going to be met with that requirement still or?
So.
It's so unique, it just doesn't seem. I mean, the frontage on Highway forty is that steep hillside dropping off.
Sure.
So.
It's not currently proposed for buildings, so it's not like they're proposing a non-residential use there.
Right, the the Highway forty frontage on this site is not necessarily part of phase one.
It doesn't need to be, we're not going to require that.
No.
Okay, that's just trying to make sure. Yeah. Um, so and I'm sorry, do you have a question, staff? I'll move it to the applicant. Okay, can we have the applicant presentation, please?
Uh, good evening, Board of Adjustments, Kevin Rifkin, Out West Investments. Um, all our presentation will be really quick, we're fine with seventy feet. Um, I think ninety feet was a mistake, honestly, uh, I think it was a typo. So we're just looking to do the seventy feet. Um, over in that area, just so we can get the circulation of the cars. Uh, we still want to build retail, we still want to hit the intent. Uh, but this lot is very, very weird. One thing to note is this is probably the only lot. That has seventy foot depth. Um, and. With the new, uh, Riverwalk zoning. It's just any lot with seventy feet or less on depth is going to be impossible to build anything on with the current zoning, so. That's why we came here, worked with Garrett for the variance. Hopefully this one's a little more straightforward, but if you have any questions, we're we're happy to answer.
So what's going to go in the Clayton Court frontage? In the seventy feet or less?
That's a great question, um, so. We can't, we can't commit, uh, because we haven't signed any agreement and because we don't have final plat, but we're looking at a restaurant user to take the whole space. Um, and the way it functions is the more depth space is where the kitchen, ADA bathroom, bathroom. Are, um, and then front of house, and then as you go up the north. Um, that's where seating into the patio is.
So. You, your plan is still to use it as retail or?
A hundred percent, yeah.
So what's the reason for the variance? Is it just because it's the fifteen feet?
Twenty feet in the narrow.
Yeah.
Right.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so as soon as we have to go to fifteen feet to fit those, uh, the road back there, we had to go through the variance request process.
Get the garages in the back part of the building.
Yeah, yeah, that all makes sense. I'm wondering if you guys would be willing to just adjust it so it says fifteen feet for seventy or less.
I would be a little hesitant to say fifteen, just because it might be fourteen and a half, and we don't want to be back here. Um, but. I mean, our our goal, you know, we can let. Go use the numbers guy.
The only reason I wouldn't say to do fifteen is I believe your guys' lot is less than seventy feet and the lot to the south of them are less than seventy feet. And then you're creating another box, like twenty was. The intent of twenty was, you know, workable, but it's arbitrary, and fifteen, I think, would just recreate that issue. I think a percentage of depth or something makes sense, but I wouldn't do another box because. It'll come up and then. We'll need to change the box again.
Yeah, right, right.
That would be my suggestion.
Gotcha.
And here again, a code revision, like, I mean, we can grant this variance because it meets.
Yeah, it does.
But a code revision to make it a percentage of the depth of the lot. Might just an idea, so.
Yeah.
Might address future plans.
Yeah, I I think that's a valid point, I would say maybe in addition to the lot. In question, um, the three separate lots that are on the Highway forty side that are all kind of small and not very deep. You know, this line shows approximately seventy feet. Roughly measured perpendicularly from the Highway forty right of way, so you can see that. You know, a-again, it kind of depends on how you measure things, but I think certainly this. Two forty, um, Highway forty lot is probably entirely less than seventy, just eyeballing it. So I I think that's something to consider that, you know, in in granting this variance and kind of using seventy feet as a standard. It it could potentially include these lots, I think these lots have. I I one consideration with the the property in question was the fact that it has frontage on both Clayton Court and Highway forty and their. Uh, one consideration with the, the property in question was the fact that it has frontage on both Clayton Court and Highway forty, and therefore it has to. Provide commercial uses on both sides, um, but, you know, recognizing that. These other lots here on the Highway forty side are quite narrow in depth, and it would be challenging to provide that, um. Twenty feet in depth, I think, uh, what would be. You know, it, it could be considered in future requests, you know, the, the variance if granted today. Um, but I think I would just maybe reference back to one of the. Conditions of approval related to. Still requiring commercial activation. So just reading through that condition of approval number one, the applicant shall still be required to accommodate the intent. Of the ground floor commercial depth requirement, um, so it doesn't exempt it completely, it just allows it to not. To be less than twenty feet in depth.
You didn't mention, uh, display window is a possibility. Actually, you know, let's, let's keep the process going here, so, anything more from the applicant?
Nope, we're good with all your suggestions, Garrett.
So any members of the public that wanted to comment? Okay, so we'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, any, any more board discussion or motion?
Make motion. There's no more discussion, approved, resolution number twenty, twenty-five oh two oh two. Approving the variance request.
And change the ninety to seventy, right?
Right, it's in, it's in this resolution.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, thank you. Second on that? Someone?
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you. Take a real quick, quick break.